We'll talk. There's a reason for that, I need to share that.
Okay.
I'm saying say yes, but I've got some corners. It's a smooth over thing, I want you to know that that works.
Mm-hmm.
As you.
But we've got a good reason we want it exactly.
Yeah, I think you're creating SAU information.
You can contribute.
Well, no, because we want to encourage board members to go to the November in service.
It's true.
Let's talk after.
Is everybody ready?
Yep.
Yes, okay. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:14. And first up, announcements and principals' reports. Porter?
Okay.
Do you have anything to? Actually, before you start, I just wanted to let you know I was at the middle school the other day, and when I walked through, I was really struck by how beautiful the grounds are, and I know you have some information on there, but I've never seen it looking so great.
It really is.
So it really looks nice.
Roger Langley and.
So, thank you.
Considered, but thank you, they really need to be, and I mentioned in the report, the unsung heroes, when we come that first day, there's a lot of work that has to get done because they, the inside and the outside is absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, it looks great.
And I want to thank them publicly, for sure.
So thank you.
I have a couple of topics that have been asked from in my report that I'd like to highlight if I could. One of them is the makerspace, and we have a video for that, and then the other is to talk a little bit about a program we're working on, Meg Beauchamp and I, so if I could start off with the, with the makerspace. This one, by the way, was, for the public, was presented at the opening day for all of the staff of SEU 39 and.
So, Porter, could you frame this a little bit? Like, what is the makerspace? How did it get to be? Who's involved? That kind of thing?
Could I wait till we show the video?
You can.
Because it sort of says a lot in, and that, well, I just would, I don't want to steal the photo of the video itself. I'll be glad to answer questions after.
Thank you.
Yeah.
More than ever, innovation and industry are advancing quicker than our schools are able to adopt and then teach. In today's world, students need a better way to gain exposure to the latest STEM technologies, collaborate on current industry trends, and learn to use modern tools.
Makerspace is a great place where education and real-world learning and classroom content and skills can all come together, not only for our students, but also for community members as well. Making doesn't know an age. You can be very young, or you can be much more experienced. The Makerspace offers a place for novice and experienced people to come together, to solve problems, to create, to really take what they imagine, and then make it into a reality.
Imagine for one moment, a nonprofit organization comprised of local businesses, volunteers, engineers, artisans, and makers, all working together to help support STEM in our schools, and then take these very same resources and make them available to the entire community. Amherst Makerspace is a nonprofit organization made up of a governing body of volunteers who are all working in collaboration with the Amherst Recreation Department and the Amherst Middle School.
Well, the makerspace movement is something that's really excited me for a few years ago, when I went to one of my conferences and saw some of the great things that schoolers were doing throughout the country to do innovation and design. And then I went to a workshop on makerspace itself, and it just at that point I realized that with the facilities we have that were being relatively unused, in my opinion, it was a great opportunity for us to try to create a makerspace area that our children could share during the school day and then community could use, and that would just be a makerspace idea.
The Amherst Middle School offered its entire innovation and design wing for use as our very own community makerspace. Working as a subsidiary of the Amherst Recreation Department, Amherst Makerspace is funded by its memberships, workshop fees, and donations, and is able to provide its services without any tax impact upon our residents.
We're really excited about the makerspace, and we'd like to expand it into the community. We have several programs that we're looking to launch to help bring different members of the community into the makerspace, to help grow the knowledge base and provide educational benefits. The Retap for STEM program is an opportunity for retired engineers to provide technical assistance in the classroom to help out with the students in their STEM education. Just because an engineer is retired, doesn't mean they stop being an engineer, and this gives them the opportunity to participate in the community, to keep their skills sharp, and to help out in the STEAM program in the middle school by helping out with woodshop, 3D printing, laser printing, designing, CAD work, whatever their skill set they would like to bring into the system is. They can bring that to the school, help out with the kids, and help grow the program and provide more opportunities for the students. Another avenue of involvement that we're looking forward to is having high school students volunteer and mentor younger students in engineering programs. The volunteers who earn makerspace time will be able to help grow the community and help educate everybody with what they're working on, and to broaden their knowledge as well as help other students.
Programs like these will help provide students more access to making. Making provides another pathway to learning different content areas in a context that has real meaning. It's about teaching kids how to learn. There's nothing more powerful to build a student's sense of intrinsic motivation than making something that really matters to them. It's a win-win for the school and our community. The entire community benefits from having a makerspace. It provides a hub for makers of all ages to meet, work on projects, and learn from each other. With a family membership, parents can take an active role in helping their children be creative and learn new concepts together. By having relationships with local businesses, our focus will be on procuring the tools and the knowledge required to keep STEM education relative to industry and help expose and prepare our students for a career in STEM.
All right, well, I was glad the, I didn't get a chance to see that first, because I think it was very self-explanatory. Brad Freeman is the narrator in this, and he's really the force behind this. Again, I came back from a conference, and it wasn't really about makerspace the first time, it was about schools using technology, and I think I may even have mentioned this in a couple of, a year or so ago, that one of the things that astounded me was one of the poorest districts in New Jersey didn't have much, and they decided, let's look at BYOD for their kids, and they knew that a lot of kids didn't have it, so they started buying small tablets for them, and then when the companies found out about it, they started offering and giving charging stations and things like that. Next thing you know, they're the Technology School of the Year, which is incredible considering that they had a very high free and reduced lunch and homeless population, that the kids were all given opportunities, and I was just so excited about that. And so, I took pictures of his presentation, and then he had a bunch of websites and things that we could go to, and when we came back, Brad and I sat there and started going through these websites, and then he just took off. He took off, and it's incredible. The other gentleman that you saw in there speaking was Marcel Chabot. He's an engineer from town, one of my former students, although I hadn't reconnected with him until he got involved with this, and all of a sudden, Marcel, you know? And he's been a heavy influence, along with several other engineers from Amherst who have got involved with this, to work on everything from, they have a system now that they can actually get in through a swipe card, through the back of the school, all secure. Eventually, before anyone can use a particular machine, they have to be checked out on that machine, they just can't go in and cut away and that type of thing, and when they do that, they'll have to swipe to use the machines, and then they can get on, and they will chat how much they're using it, we know who's in the building, who's not. It is separated from the wing down there, for those of you that know, it's the maker, the innovation and design wing. It is locked off and under cameras, so we're just not really worried about it, and we're excited. Just an addition, and I apologize, it's not in my report yet, but we just were contacted, and the company's just offered to give us a used machine, a steel lathe, which is a value of about $5,000, they like, and they donate to us, and now we've already heard about that, and I think this is going to start, start a really big thing. We are going to meet with the, I'm not su, the manager of Lowe's down here in Amherst, and Walmart, Tony Tyner's going to meet with us. He's on vacation this week, next week, or Monday we'll meet. We plan on meeting with Korea Lumber, who's been tremendous over the years of donating unbelievable amounts of material. We want to make sure they can all get involved with this, with probably, with the Infante family from Amherst that own True Value. We think this is going to become a real opportunity for people to help us out, and certainly, you know, get a little, you know, recognition for it. So, again, Brad Freeman just needs such, he's going crazy with us, he's putting hours, and I should mention also that our innovation and design teacher, Steve Opry, has been heavily involved, a number of countless hours that he put to get that place back together. I encourage, I know some of you had a chance to come back in and see it, but it doesn't even look like it did a month ago.
Oh, wow.
It is just incredible, the machinery that's there, we're looking at, you know, more safety features and things in it, and so, I can't say enough about that. Are there any questions on the makerspace innovation design area?
I actually do. If you have people that are interested in offering their knowledge, maybe not necessarily in the certain things that you might have, but maybe web developers that might be interested in, you know, teaching the community how to create small little web pages for different things, you know, like the gardening club or whatever.
Yep.
Or, you know, just, you had mentioned at the PTA meeting, you know, cake decorating and all these different ideas. Who do they, who would community members go to to?
Great question.
Put themselves out there?
First, go on the site, and you'll, when you go onto ours, that'll help anybody who has any questions about it, but they, all of the organizational pieces are done through Amherst Recreation and Craig Fraley. So when we got with him, I mean, again, he was, I shouldn't mention him, he's also a huge part of it, helping us with the organization. You go through, let's say you had an idea, let's say it was that you wanted to offer pottery, okay? You go to them, they set everything up, they, the people will, that will sign up for the class, we'll go through them, pay the fee to go through them, and then there's a share, profit share that's in there that's based, it's roughly 50% of the person who puts the training on, and then 50% to the Amherst Rec and to the school. All of our money will go back, obviously, into the program and to, into the costs, but.
For the people at home, when you say through them, you mean through the Amherst Recreation?
Right, correct. Everything's through the Amherst Rec. People call, and I'm talking to a lot of people about it, but I always direct them to the website, or especially to Craig Fraley and his department, because there are people out there, as Marcel mentioned, you don't stop being an engineer, and so there are people out there, I'm sure, that have some great ideas, and he said there are people that have been contacting him to talk about different ideas. Not everything we may be able to, to offer, but we have a lot of equipment, a lot of opportunity in our school to, for people to get creative, and that's what it's all about.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, good question.
Is there, there's a makerspace website, or?
It's through the Amherst, through, Amherst Recreation, I believe, has it as well, but if you go on our website, you, there's, you can.
The makerspace.
Get a link to, to the makerspace as well there.
Okay.
Recreation definitely has it, and.
Whereas tonight, is something happening tonight?
Yes. Tonight is their grand opening, or their open house, if you will. That's why Brad wasn't able to be here, I invited him, I wanted to, he said, well, I'd like to be in both places, but this is a big night for them.
Yeah.
And I wish I could be there, too. I mean, it's, it's really something that's exciting, and people are signing up, as I think I mentioned before. I signed up the very first class, I kind of had to, in their, and learned to weld and sweat pipe and all that stuff, and it was some praise, and it was just really an awesome course, and that's the beginning. Since then, I think there's been five of those, and there's been other offerings, and it's just starting, so.
You're so passionate about this. Every time you talk about it, you get so animated, and it's like.
It's just, it's so exciting.
Yeah.
It brings our school to attention. NPR, it was on, David, excuse me, David Brooks did an article in the Macaca Monitor, and it got picked up by the Nashua Telegraph and Milford Cabinet, and then they interviewed him on NPR, and he just couldn't talk enough about it, said we were the, he's investigated we're the only middle school in, anywhere, that actually has it with a community. There are some middle schools who might have a maker movement in their school where they have kids, but we're the first to do it as a makerspace, and we're very proud of that, obviously. It's pretty neat, getting a little bit, a little bit of publicity, and it's always good, so.
It's a great community partnership and private-public partnership, and great job.
Out of a strategic plan, if I might add. Okay, so.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, thank you for, I know you've been a driving force behind it, I appreciate it.
Fantastic job, Jerry.
Thank you. The next thing that I'd like to mention is, Meg Beauchamp couldn't be here tonight, but something that we want to inform the board of, because we've been talking a little about it, we have for the last couple of years, and Peter certainly had this in one of his districts, I think it was the Pembroke District before, a program in which we, instead of sending our children all, you know, sometimes long distances and things like that, we're looking at being able to bring in a program primarily right now for autistic students, and Jerry's looking at that as well down the future, I believe, I want to say that for you, right Jerry, but we're looking at some.
I don't know if you're autistic.
Okay, well, but anyway, we'll be looking at this program, we've already contacted the state, Meg and I were on a conference call with people from the state, and they have given us the go-ahead to start the program this year, and let me read a little bit of what Meg said, so I won't destroy the full meaning. Meg and I, obviously, are working together with our principals and our staff to create a district program for students who may need alternative curriculum opportunities and highly specialized programming. And so when I say autistic, that won't be the only, but there are certain areas we can't offer, but we will look at them. We're working with the New Hampshire DOE to receive program approval, and they'll allow us to utilize our in-district program as a specialized placement for students who have that level of need. This will in turn allow us to maintain students within our district who would otherwise be placed out of district. We have the capability, we have the skills, and we have the room, so this is a great chance, and again, another thing that Meg has, has really been driving along with Peter, I have to thank him, too, because we all feel this way. Every child will not be able to brought back, be brought back in a district, we know that, but boy, there's a lot of them right now that get on a bus and drive a long way, and drive a long way back, and we could have them right in, in our school, in our program, so.
Prevent kids from going out of district.
Right, and that's it, yes, and prevent children from going out of district as well, so there will be always a potential of some cost savings as well.
At what point do you expect to have more, so we can hear the pros and cons and so forth for this?
I won't speak for Meg yet, but we are working on it, with the beginning of the year, as I said, the big thing was getting with the DOE, met with a team of them on a conference call, and they said to us, we'll, they always give you a year, we'll give you that year to get started, and then at that point, we'll be looking at what we need for full facilities and that type of thing. We've had some ideas, we're looking at the rooms already, looking at the ability for us to make some renovations within that would be paid for, obviously, through special education grants and things like that, to improve our facilities, to make it easier. Life Skills Program is really a big one that we're looking at, that's a great start, where the children could have, you know, the stoves and a bathroom in there, for instance, for those children that may need that kind of, and so it's in a design stage right now, but we'll, we have it on our, so we're going to make sure we keep you informed as we go along, I just don't have too much more to give you than that at this time.
I'm just thinking, you know, budget season coming.
Yeah, oh, yes.
We need to be able to understand the costs versus savings versus, you know.
Right.
What, how can we make sure we're benefiting our students, of course, and so, you know, I know that, I'm just a little concerned about the compressed time between now and when we need to have our budget together, whether or not there'll be enough time, but hopefully there will be, and we'll have a chance to.
Working with the state, they'll be very helpful, they've offered their assistance with us as well, and Meg is, is very well-versed in this, which is great, having her on board because, so I, I feel confident that it will be a crunch, but we'll do the very best we can to get this, because it's something we really believe in sooner than later.
Right.
And especially with the state said, wow, you know, when we presented our, an overall general prospectus to them, they just said, whoa, we'd love to have you do that, so we'll keep you informed, for sure, and now Jerry was looking at the same, we're looking at a really.
We will, we're making something, too.
Yeah.
We haven't started on ours yet, but we'll bring something forward in the budget process, our proposal for next year or for the year after. I don't think we're going to do both at the same time.
In terms of staffing, do you think that we have that capability now, or is that something we would have to make adjustments?
I think some of the staffing we will have in place, so it will be realigning some staff, but I can't give it, you know, I'd love to tell you zero percent increase in staffing.
Well, you know, increasing the staffing is an issue for saving, if the savings come from, because it's extremely expensive, I know, to bring, take people out of district, and even if we have to increase our staff, if the net is, is a decrease, well, if we're doing the right thing, number one, but two, it's always nice to do the right thing and have it also save money in the budget.
Yeah, right.
So it's, I'm interested to hear about that analysis, of course.
We're going to do that.
Staffing doesn't bother me as much, as much is, okay, we can sell to the public the staffing increase as long as it shows a, you know, it's cost effective.
Yes, it definitely, when we talked to the state, they were clear, as well as Meg was, that the reason we're going this way is that there will definitely be both the benefit to the student to be able to be with their peers in our school, but also there should be substantial savings, as you write, some of these children's costs can be, you know, very, very high, and they need the services, we want to give it to them here, you know? Any other questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I show anything, or do you want? Do you have something in particular?
I just have one other question for Porter. Can you just tell me what an aquaponic garden system?
I certainly can. We have a family, the Steele family from Amherst, Mrs. Steele came to me in the spring and said, listen, we were part of.
Not Adam's wife.
Not Adam.
Oh, no, with an E, with an E.
They have an E on the end.
With an E at the end, yes. And they, they came to me, Kristen Jessica Steele was the mom, and she has children in our school, who came to and said that they were part of a program from a couple of folks from MIT that were trying to develop aquaponic gardens. They are gardens that don't have earth in them, but water, and they, she described it to me, and I had no idea, until I went to the house to get it with my custodial staff, just how awesome and big this thing is. Probably the value of it, that she's donating initially, I would say probably $15,000 for this. It has everything from the fish tanks that produce the waste, that produces the water, and it's got chambers, and I hope you can come in and see it, it is incredible, and the classes are already starting, the seventh grade with Amanda Rogers and Tracy Gagnon, the two teachers, I'm going to have the seventh graders running this particular aspect. We have another one that's, that we had purchased in the springtime, and it is a hydroponic, which is, does, has, it has, it uses water, but it does use earth, but it's a system with black lights, and you're going to see, it'll be in our foyer when they finally grow, it's these incredible-looking things. It's all part of STEM and STEAM, and having the kids involved with, with all ways, the program itself was designed to try to, to provide food in small areas with very little good soil and that type of thing. Expected to start, but through grants, they're hoping to, to get this worldwide, so it's very neat. So that, I hope that answers that question, and it is, and you're welcome to come and see that. Right now, it's, it's six feet long and six feet high, and it's, you know, two feet deep, and it's a piece of furniture with the windows in it, and it is so, so cool.
Wow.
Any other questions for Porter?
Thank you.
No, thank you for that.
Jerry, any questions for Jerry? I had one, but.
I don't think I have any questions for him.
So, can you just give maybe a brief assessment of how kindergarten is going, in terms of logistics, bus, lunch, communication, and how the kids are holding up, are they exhausted?
No, I do not think the children are as exhausted as we might expect.
The adults, oh.
Probably the adults.
That's what I was waiting for, too.
Yeah, no, I can say I've been there for lunch, I've been there for recess, I've been there for dismissal, I've been there for everything.
Yep.
I think everybody has really risen to the challenge, I think.
Good.
The biggest glitch we had was the first day dismissal, where, you know, we had agreed to try to have the Clark School kids bust over to Wilkins.
Right.
That wasn't going to work, we were able to change that day, too.
Yeah.
We're at the point now that the Clark School teachers actually have the kids out, ready to go, and there's three buses there, but they've got everybody ready, so actually, we're ahead of the game.
Okay.
I would say the vast majority of kids impress me with their stamina, and yet, I know the teachers are using that language with the children, that we're all working on stamina, and they, they can define it in their own words, so I would say things are going quite well. Yeah, I mentioned we have new tables, which of course still haven't come in.
Yes, yes.
But really, it was great to see everybody kind of rally and say, we can get tables to the kindergarten classes, which was terrific. So, the feedback from parents has been great. This morning, the PTA hosted a coffee specifically targeted to kindergarten parents, which was nice, and, you know, they had, I would say, very, very simple questions about kindergarten, nothing really complex, or that, I would say, there might have been a little more conversation about homework in general, but not specific to kindergarten. So I would say people are very upbeat, optimistic, wanting to know when's the first report they'll get, which will be part of those reports. I will say things that kindergarten teachers, the six of them, are working industriously to work as a team. So one thing you'd be probably pleased with, I think, is when we met over the summer as a kindergarten team, we realized, looking at the report card, kindergarten report card, which I think we had revised about eight times, and we'd said we wouldn't revise it again until, there was no grading for science and social studies on the kindergarten report card, so luckily, we picked up on that, and that's been changed along with a couple of other things, pretty minimal changes, but what the kindergarten teachers did that I thought was impressive was they looked at the first grade report card, and looked at a couple of other kindergarten report cards, but we're really focused on trying to align it with first grade.
Right, good.
So it looks similar, but first grade isn't touching this, we're leaving this alone for a while. So again, I think it's an example of the kindergarten teachers really trying to work as a group and identify problems.
That's great.
And take them on quickly, so I think it's going quite smoothly.
Good.
I think it was a great decision, and I think the community's benefiting, in my senses, the majority of, and I don't want you to think we haven't had any tears or anything, we have it, I think we've made it through.
I'm sure.
Pretty successfully. And there is just one thing I'd bring up, doesn't have anything to do with kindergarten, but I know, we did have a PTA meeting Tuesday night, also, it was a full PTA meeting, and Beth was there, and we did have some different questions, but again, pretty simple stuff, but Beth had brought to my attention, it would be helpful to have attendance over a long period of time, multiple years, so I can make copies of this, I can bring it to the next meeting, I can keep bringing it, but just to give people a sense of, right now, actually today, with a couple of kids that I would say we have in limbo status, we haven't really confirmed that they've moved out, but we haven't gotten three kids like that, 674 students right now at Clark Wilkins. Last year, on the last day of school, we had 641 students, which was significantly more students than we had started with at the beginning of the year, and I started with 625. In June of 2015, we ended the year with 621, but in 2013, '14, we ended with 635. So definitely, this was the year of the biggest noticeable discrepancy. I'm going to attribute most of that to kindergarten, perhaps even though it's not all in kindergarten. So I think in forging ahead with the budget for next year and planning, I think, you know, we've always accounted for a certain percentage increase in first grade.
Yep.
Because we know kids have not come to us. I know many of those children are with us, but I'm not sure they all are, so I'm not quite sure how, how to come up with a number we can be confident about.
Right.
For first grade, I don't think.
Maybe somewhere in between.
Yeah, I don't think it would be a huge number, and of course, we recognize, realty is moving pretty quickly in Amherst right now, so I don't know how that will impact.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted. I'll bring those numbers back even next month, so you can have a better sense of what it's looked like, and we even have it working done by male and female students per grade level, whatever will help, but keep you posted.
Okay. Great. He did break it, he showed it to me real quick before the meeting started, he also, he broke it down by grades, you can see first grade, you know, year one, year two, year three, so you can also track, like, first grade, you know, last year's first grade, this year's second grade.
Yeah.
How they've, that particular class has increased, so we can see that it's. how they've, that particular class has increased, so we can see that it's not all just kindergarten.
Yep.
So that's kind of what I was curious about, is how much of this is growing everywhere.
Yeah, I think we only had three new third graders. So even though the numbers are up, we only had three new third graders, and I don't know why.
Okay.
But nine new second graders since last year.
Second grade and first grade, first grade also.
Yeah.
And just because we spoke about it last time, changing the templates on the principal's report to align with the strategic plan. Porter and Jerry and Christine and I spoke at our agenda setting meeting, and they're working on a template. They just want to make sure that we, we don't miss anything. So trying to align it with the strategic plan, but making sure that there's, there aren't items that they would otherwise report out on. So, so they're working on that, and I just want to let board members know that that would be coming soon, and that that change will be reflected.
Like in Rome, we would clearly connect to it.
Right. Yep, yep. So, all right. Public comment, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? Maggie?
Do you want to sit next to me? There you go, then we could go forever.
Hi, Maggie McKay, Amherst, New Hampshire. I brought this up to the board at the end of last year, and I brought it up to the Southhegen Board at the meeting two weeks ago, about the placement of public comment in the agenda. Because it's at the beginning, if there's discussion during the meeting that we might want to comment on, that we either place it in two places, or say at the end of the meeting, can, is there any public comment about what's taken place, otherwise you have to wait a month.
Right.
So I know Peter said he was going to look at it for Southhegen, so I'm bringing it up again, because I would think it would, whatever, the structure is the same for both meetings.
Right.
And the location of it in the agenda is in the same place, so that, I wanted to raise that again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie, we have a, periodically, our, the four chairs of our boards meet, and they're meeting tomorrow. So it's going to be one item that we'll put on the.
Good evening, twine purpose, Amherst, New Hampshire. Thought I would prepare a statement. This deals with acknowledging the best of the best students. Imagine with me that finally the schools in SAU 39 are the best of the best in New Hampshire. All of the standardized test scores are at levels that are perfect or coming, or near perfect, are either perfect or near perfect. And now that the large cost for pupil bill is justified, and the towns are beginning to feel good about what they're getting for their money, but then again, all of a sudden, the DOE and other reporting entities decide it's just better to dump you all in the 25% top, the top 25% bracket. So how do you feel? Hurt, ignored, disrespected, cheated of honor and recognition? Wondering how could they, why bother? Going forward, will you consider just being good enough to make that bottom, that top 25%? I mean, the feeling is, why bother? And that was the feeling this past year. Do no more than what's necessary, because the grading mechanism is at best mediocre. Because having the ability to achieve perfection, but ignoring perfection, will lead to mediocrity, mediocrity. Now, let's go back to the present. Just what do you think the message was you sent to the top students that matriculated from eighth grade in June 2016? You slapped them in the face. Not just them, but their families and loved ones. Those who achieve perfection are deserving of the highest honor. Perfection deserves to be recognized on its merits. To lump them in a category that where it requires less is an insult. To continue to perpetrate this offense is unforgivable. None of our students deserve this. To right this wrong, I hope you will publicly apologize to each of the students who did achieve perfection, and issue them an award, the award that they earned and are deserving of. For you to do so, we'll bring into question the banners that hang at AMS talking about excellence. You can't redefine excellence as something less than what it is. And we all know what those word, what the word excellence means. If you not want to be accused of teaching in the middle, you can no longer afford to ignore the best of your best. We pay too much for education in this town for this kind of recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the board? Okay. Next, the consent agenda. And I had one change in the minutes. So can I get a motion?
To?
Yeah, I pull the minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, pulling the, but pulling the minutes because of a change.
Yeah, they just, it was like.
Okay.
So, yeah, so maybe just pulls the minutes.
Okay.
That's how it's written.
Okay.
You pull the minutes.
So I'll pull the minutes.
And you do the correction.
Yep.
And then you do the motion with the. Okay, so I should give you the correction now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I haven't done this, this yet. So line 138. Where it says she added that the warrant committee for Amherst is meeting next week. There should be a period. And she also added that the streamline committee plans to do an individual presentation at the SAU meeting. It's not the warrant committee that's doing the presentation, it's the streamline committee. That was it. And then I go, just go, make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, sorry, go ahead, Beth.
To accept everything?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes, including, or to accept the consent agenda, including the changes to the minutes that Amy just made.
Yes. Is there a second? All those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Now we have 2016-17 heating oil pricing, and I believe John Ribeschott is going to address us on that. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Yep.
John, just give us your brief update on oil prices.
Okay, because I actually have a question on it, so. Go ahead, you might answer it if you talk.
So last year, we were locked in at 196.9, I think, for heating oil. This year, I worked with Brian from UMG Bulk Energy, and he guided me the best day to buy, which apparently is the week after Labor Day. And when I called for pricing at that time, I guess I was correct, because all the oil companies said, wow, you picked the best day to buy. So we, we were in at 181.9, which is 15 cents cheaper than last year. So for the Amherst School District with Clark and Wilkins on oil, that saves us about $3,000, a little bit, a little bit less, but I like to round it up so it sounds better. Or if we have the same usages last year, so that's the.
My question is, with the pre-buy concept, I don't remember, I, what happens if oil prices go down over the winter?
We are paying the same price.
What's the history of?
It always goes up as the winter goes on.
Okay.
Not always, but.
At least.
For the most part. Where the prices are so low, to get any more savings out of this, I think it would be foolish to, to try to play that game. If it was $4 a gallon, we might want to think about that.
Thank you.
Thanks for, for deliberating, that's great.
Okay, now we can move on to presentations and reports. And Christine has a presentation on the literacy curriculum.
She did.
It was on, so that's not good for the battery, so.
Well, it's on right now.
Is that working? Oh, it's working. We'll see. It can be a lot. It's not too far down. It's only page 19, if that helps. Oh, there we go. Okay. So I wanted to start with an overview of our summer literacy institute, just to share with you how our literacy institute went, some of the work that we accomplished, and some feedback from participants, and then share the curriculum with you. So our goals were really to create a curriculum that was aligned to our standards, and really look at the importance of coherence, you know, looking really kindergarten through eighth grade, but, you know, even did a lot of work with fifth through eighth grade was here at Southhegen, even with that 5-12 continuum, we felt was a really important piece to make sure that we had. And creating a standards-based curriculum, make sure that all students have access to, you know, similar expectations. So the teachers were really creating units that are a high-level unit, it's a really curriculum. So we were focusing on essential questions and enduring understandings. We also looked at complex texts to ensure that the text that we were using at each grade level was appropriate, and then looking at common assessments. So our work the first day, we had a welcome and overview, and we did a mini lesson on understanding by design, which is really the framework that we used for curriculum. It's the different components that we had, and that went really well for our first through fourth grade teachers, UBD is something new for them. And our fifth through 12th grade teachers were really familiar and comfortable with that already, so they actually dove into competencies and work-study practices. And competencies are the academic competencies, they're larger than a standard, and we've spoken about competencies a little bit. The work-study practices are the non-cognitive skills, so those are the things like collaboration and creativity. So we had our fifth through 12th grade teachers digging into that, and then teachers had time. So after the morning mini lesson, they had time just to work into grade level, work in grade level groups. Facilitators went around to support the teachers, and they worked just creating and developing their units in their curriculum. And the framework is standards-based, so it's built off of standards. The teachers are often starting right with the standards, and which standards they want to assess in that unit. Really providing a common experience, while we don't want every teacher to be doing the exact same thing on the exact same day, we certainly want teacher voice and choice. We do want to make sure that all students are receiving similar instruction and expectation. So it's providing that common experience. And the coherence, which I already spoke to, but it also allowed us to begin to integrate with other content areas, especially with science and social studies. Teachers are always saying how there's not enough time during the day to get to everything. So when we can integrate science and social studies into our reading instruction, it really allows us to be able to make sure that science and social studies are, is not falling off our plate. And if you look, the next slide is really just an overview of what that curriculum framework looked like. So we're getting pretty deeply, sometimes even into lesson level with some of our formative assessments and some of our complex texts. So you'll see that while the teachers did that, that's really more at the lesson level, and some is individualized. So we, that's not part of our curriculum that we are actually sharing with the, with all of you. We have the higher level piece that we share with you, but teachers worked on all of those pieces, so I thought it would be important to see the work that they were doing. So for each unit, they were determining their unit title and the timeframe of that unit, but the essential questions. So what question, deep-level question that can't easily be answered, are students going to be exploring throughout that unit? What understandings will they have, really for the rest of their life, about that unit? What standards and work-study practices will be assessed during the unit? What competencies will be assessed during that unit? What complex texts would be used? And that might vary from teacher to teacher. Summit of assessments, every unit has a common summative assessment, and then what are some possible formative assessments, which really is more at the, the teacher level, but allowed for them to begin to talk about that. And what teachers had to really guide their work. This was really work that teachers did in their grade level groups, and facilitators were walking around to support and to help them, but they had this unit plan checklist that actually guided them through each piece of the framework, to ensure that they were correctly coming up with essential questions and writing them the, the right way. So this checklist really helped to guide their work. And we worked in OneNote this year, which was new for all of us, and the teachers were really exciting. I even got some feedback on our in-service day. John Shuttenger, the principal at Mont Vernon, sent me a quick email and said, the first grade teachers are loving OneNote. They can actually record audio in there, they can upload files, so it's really dynamic, and the teachers really enjoy using OneNote. And it was new for, for many of our staff members, and it's actually allowed them to feel even more comfortable with that application. OneNote is really just an electronic notebook, so you think about an old spiral gown notebook with the different tabs and pages, that's exactly what it is, but electronic. So it has different sections, every grade level was given a different section in that notebook, and it's fully collaborative. So you can, any change you make, you can see what people are doing, and they can be making changes at the same time, which is really nice. So multiple people can work on it at the same time. But a really nice added benefit was that grade levels often checked and looked at the grade level above them and below them, because they could see the work that those grade levels were doing at that same time. And they, they did, they said, oh, well, our unit might touch on a, you know, similar to a second-grade standard. Let's see what second grade is doing to make sure that we're preparing our students so that they're ready to tackle that second-grade standard. And with OneNote, we gave them the caution that, you know, if you delete something, it's, it's gone, it's deleted, so be really careful. And everyone was really careful, we didn't have any issues or any problems. And the other nice feature, too, is we can give just literacy teachers editing privileges, but anyone else can have view-only privileges, where they're able to see the notebook, but not necessarily make changes if they don't need to. So that certainly helps as well. Teachers were a little nervous at first, and usually one teacher in each group was kind of the, the lead for that. And this is just what OneNote looks like, just that you can get a sense, and you can see all the different grade levels. This was just the welcome page, but in each grade level, there were different tabs, the agendas were in there, different resources were loaded for teachers, so any resource that they needed was right there in the OneNote. And this is just a screenshot of what that curriculum framework looked like before it was even added in, before teachers were doing their work. So the rest of the literacy institute, which it was four days, the teachers really liked the structure. We always started together, we did a mini lesson in the beginning of the day, and then they went off and did their work, and they were supported throughout the day. And we received a lot of positive feedback about that. So on our second day, we dove into depth of knowledge and performance assessment. And we spoke a lot about that to support the teachers in building their common assessments. And then they just had the grade level work time. Grade three, we actually, or day three, we didn't pull them together, we just let them have that day for that work time, and checked in and supported them throughout. In, on day four, we actually started together and talked about in-service, and how our in-service day was going to be, which our August day was focused on continuation of this work and sharing out. Not every teacher was able to attend the literacy institute, so it was really important that we had that in-service day for the teachers that were there to share out that work, and to make sure everyone was on the page to start the year off using this curriculum. And the teachers were also working on designing a page for feedback, so as they go through the year, they could be making revisions on their curriculum, but putting also notes in there for revisions that they might need to make. They continued with their grade level work time, and many also finalized some ordering needs. As, as we continue to transition to new standards, we need additional materials, really more complex texts at each grade level, so we've been doing a lot of work in, in that area. And then we just had a reflection together and an evaluation at the end. So I just wanted to share a little, and I know it might be hard to read, I won't read all of it to you, hopefully you can see it in your packet. But as far as what teachers learned during the literacy institute, they spoke about how they really understood fondly. they spoke about how they really understood fondly what backwards design was and how to design a unit, which is a huge aha for them. And how they started with the performance assessment and matching that assessment to standards and the importance of that alignment. They talk about how much learning took place and how they were linking work from last summer and then throughout the school year, and then really re-looking at those standards and the alignment. So the teachers talked a lot about the ahas they had in digging deeply into the standards. The time when they're creating their own curriculum, it's that time, you're not going to read through standards documents. They're very dry and not exciting at all. But we actually gave them flip charts that were their, their standards were actually in a flip chart, so it was really easy to use. And they all loved their flip charts. We only bought one per team, and we've had to request every teacher wants their own standards flip chart. So we're certainly working on that. We can actually use some grant money to get the rest of the teachers their flip charts. So the, the big piece really with the Summer Literacy Institute was, you know, they understood that when you're actually creating curriculum, you have to use the standards, so you deepen your understanding of the standards. So you better know what the expectations are for your students at that grade level. And as far as accomplishments, they really, they finished their curriculum. They able, they were able to map out their year. They created a lot of performance assessments, which really, that's getting a jumpstart on all of the work that we're doing with PACE, which is really exciting. And this was hugely important for setting the groundwork for the PACE work that's upcoming. And they were really excited. You know, some said how they had six whole units, and they didn't think it was possible in four days to really fully write six units, and they did. And many have six. And the last was, what did you like about the Literacy Institute? They spoke about the huge blocks of uninterrupted time and how meaningful that was for them just to work, and that they rarely have that time with their grade-level colleagues to just be able to sit and work. One of the other big takeaways was around Mont Vernon and Amherst and the collaboration that happened there at the Summer Literacy Institute, that you couldn't tell who was Mont Vernon and who was Amherst, which in the past, you know, you often could tell when you walked into the room. And they really felt that they built a cohesive team at each grade level, which was huge. And they said how the time was so productive. Someone said they were so pleased that all, of all, what fourth grade was able to accomplish, that they liked both the process and the content of the day. They also spoke about clear and consistent direction, that that's something that the teachers have wanted and really felt that they got it. That the morning gatherings set their course for the day, and then we touched base with them to really support and to help them. And the productivity and the collaboration was amazing. They loved the OneNote. That was the other feedback that we received from it. So really exciting work. I think teachers really, even their understanding of curriculum, and especially around assessment. But also, the collaboration piece was huge. So really exciting work. A lot of positive feedback from those four days. So I think they were really productive days. And we have a curriculum document, which is really exciting, too. And I do have copies for all of you. So if you want to take one and pass, we're not asking you to approve the curriculum document at this meeting. It's pretty thick. I have grades one through four in there. Kindergarten is still working on theirs. Kindergarten was a little bit different this year, because we were doing full-day kindergarten work, and we spent our work not just on literacy. We had a few days with kindergarten, but we were working on math as well. So kindergarten isn't as far along. They have a really good plan for where their units, you know, what their units are, their unit titles, and a lot of the content of their units. But the actual curriculum framework is not as complete. We do have a meeting with kindergarten tomorrow, so I do hope to touch base with them. And we might have even more of a completed document to be able to share out with you. But I think even having, you have access to grades one through eight, and really just be able to dig in and take a look. But you'll see it follows that same framework. And it does include the enduring understandings, the essential questions, the unit titles, the standards. And for many, it includes the summative assessments in there. Third grade, they did such a great job. All of their assessments are uploaded as Word documents, so I can't copy it and put it in there. They're live in OneNote. But many others actually hadn't actually completed their assessments yet, like their student pages and teacher pages. So they have summaries in there. But the assessments are really included, just to give you a flavor and a sense. And that's actually how the units are built. Often, teachers will start with the assessments and then build backwards to determine those standards and the alignment. So I know it's a huge document, but, you know, I'm happy to answer questions if you have questions. But I wanted you to have, you know, at least a full month to digest, and, you know, I'm happy to answer questions. But yeah, the work, right? And the teachers, the other big feedback was, they feel like they have a plan for the year, and they were so excited to start the year because they have their plan. And a lot, you know, that it's not meant to be daily lesson plans. It's really meant that every teacher is on the same, every teacher is agreed to teach these units. And that's what's the consistency and the continuity between, you know, different teachers at the same grade level, which we haven't had in the past.
It reminds me of what you showed us for the fifth-grade math, or for the sixth-grade math, where like, it's very clear as to, in order to hit the endpoint.
Yeah, yeah. And the teachers have done, they have even more documents in OneNote, other standards maps. The teachers, they get very anxious if they can't see all of the standards. They like checkmarks next to them, so they like to know that they've hit all of them. So we even have additional, additional documents in OneNote that actually shows how many times they've taught a standard, and even if they don't assess it. So the standards you're looking at are all the standards that are assessed for that unit. There's additional standards that are actually taught. So we have other standards maps to help the teachers as well.
And all the work-study practices.
Yeah, so work-study practices, that's new. So some teachers did put it in. The challenge is actually deciding how we're teaching those work-study practices if we're assessing them, and that is still very new. You'll also notice a lot of the competencies are not put in yet, and that's still very new for teachers. And a lot of that will be built this year. As we go through our PACE work, when we're designing assessments, we'll be determining what competency is matching that assessment, so they'll be able to add it in.
Is it already determined what standards go with what competencies?
Yes. So it's actually kind of easy. We could have even filled in for the teachers. You can, yes. Yeah. So that's a pretty easy task. We didn't want, you know, with all of the work, the more that the teachers do themselves, the deeper their understanding is. So in some grade levels, those competencies are blank. But that's just, you know, more to fill in later as we deepen our understanding around them.
That's great. Really impressive.
Yeah, this is great.
They did a lot of work.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, their time was really well spent.
Both Chair and I put in our reports, though, that Christine did an incredible job. And I know I can speak for Bethany. At my level, this is why it was successful.
And this is only one of the, like, nine things. Yeah, that happened this summer. So I know we'll be hearing more.
Yes, right.
You should mention Liz Manolis, too. Liz Manolis was very involved with all the middle-school grades and the elementary, and is now. So there's a lot of collaboration going on that connects the middle school, Mont Vernon, Mont Vernon and Mike Wilkins will do all of our late starts together. And we may even do some of our staff meetings together. So I believe that this established the groundwork for even this past week's late start to be so successful.
Yep. That's great.
Is that?
Yes. I'm seeing that. I'm seeing her name in here. This is really, like, to kind of bring it all, what they're learning in one. And that's, they did a lot of work on this.
Yeah. And really, grades one through four, they really almost started from scratch. This summer, they had built some of their units last year. But they really were very new to the idea of designing curriculum and the UBD framework. So they struggled the prior summer. And while they had a draft of units, they really needed to work through all of last year to figure out, like, they were introduced to the framework. They planned kind of a draft, worked through it throughout the year. And it was really this summer where it all came together for them.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And let me know if you have questions. And we can, I'll be sure to put this in the packet. And as I was photocopying, I didn't pageinate, I realized. So I can do that for when it goes in the packet. So if you have questions for a certain page number, we certainly, you know, I can answer them next month. But I thought it would be good to approve the curriculum next month, just since we are using it all of this year. There certainly will be some revisions that are needed to it. But I'd rather bring it to you this year, and then bring it again to you next year if needed, if there's any changes to the curriculum.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So Christine, if you could stay.
Yeah.
Under discussion items, we had talked last month a bit about a data dashboard, and I wanted to get an update from you, and then I have an update also for the board.
Yeah, yeah. So we worked with Mont Vernon at their last school board meeting, and I've worked with Tom Driscoll as well. And he's, he put together a list of possible items that we could include in a data dashboard, and a pretty comprehensive list. So I can even email this out if it's easier. But I just received this from Tom a day or two ago. So different pieces. He kind of grouped them, which I thought really helped enrollment, you know, school size, class size, teacher-student ratio. And then financial pieces, budget, cost per pupil, state aid, federal aid. And then teaching staff, which, you know, number of full-time teachers, certifications, years' experience, percent highly qualified, teacher professional development, the number of hours, the average number of hours of teacher professional development each year. And then really looking at that student outcomes with standardized assessments. And then either some academic highlights, which, you know, full-day kindergarten, pieces like that. And then other extracurricular activities or honors or awards. So I thought those were a pretty good, a pretty good list of different items that we might want to include. The only other thing I was thinking, you know, the student-to-computer ratio might be something else that we want to include. But I thought it was a pretty exhaustive list. And I had done a little bit of research looking at some other websites, which I certainly can send to all of you along with an email with this in it. There, a lot of the websites I've come across are more compliance-based. And it really is mostly the standardized assessment and budget information. There aren't as many that are broad. But I certainly can send you some examples.
So just so you all know, tomorrow, we have a four chairs meeting. And this is on the agenda for us to talk, because all of the districts are looking at doing this, and we want to be as aligned as possible. So we're going to talk about this tomorrow, and then come up with a plan to develop this and then implement it. And I know we're looking at the digital magazine as a, for the SAU as a way to showcase this information. So, yeah. So, and then, you know, not only having the information out there, but how are we going to use the information as a district? So, so I'll keep you posted after our four chairs meeting. So in further discussions with Christine, figuring out the data points. And we should all have a discussion about that as well. So perhaps it could be an SAU, if, SAU for discussion. Yes.
So you, do you want to talk also about grading and reporting committee?
Oh, yes, I can do that, yeah.
While you're there?
Yeah. Yep. Yes. So the assessment, grading, and reporting committee, I think we updated you that we had book club meetings this past summer, which were really productive. Every book club spoke about, you know, how engaging their conversations were and how much they learned from them. So really exciting. And I know Paul needs an On Your Mark book, so I do have that for him.
Yay! I was going to ask you about that.
So it's, we're reusing our books because they've been in such high demand. So that was, someone had already read and had highlighted in that. But, so you'll have some highlights.
It's like your used book in college, you know.
Oh, do you need a copy?
No, I already read it. So you can have my copy if you need to pass out.
Thank you.
Yeah, they've, what we did, actually, we had sent an email out towards the end of the summer, sharing with everyone what the assessment, grading, and reporting committee was reading. And, you know, I said, "We have a few extra books if anyone wants them." And I got a flood of emails, and a lot of people were interested in reading, which is really exciting. So teachers not on the committee are reading the books as well. So it's been, you know, in demand. But I figured what would make the most sense. We have an assessment, grading, and reporting committee meeting in the beginning of October. So we can share out a little, maybe even at our November meeting. It'll probably give Paul enough time to read. If you're interested in reading, we can kind of share out our takeaways that we'll generate at our next assessment, grading, and reporting committee meeting. So I figured that was the best way.
And then we jumped over overview of summer work also.
Yeah, and there should be a slot. Oh, good, here it is.
Yeah. This is what Christine did all summer.
Yeah, that was. Oh, nope. Yeah, no, I don't see Sandborn on there. Yeah, so this was in district. So, yeah, I know, I didn't, I did put PACE, though, but that was. But I, this was more of teacher work, and since we didn't have teachers join us, I didn't put Sandborn on here. But, yeah, that was three other days, the Sandborn Competency Institute. So summer learning, I included all SAU. I thought it was important, even, you know, the 912 STEAM Institute, which Sue Downer really organized at the high school. And really, great work was done to just bring the math and the science department together at the high school. But the Literacy Institute, I already spoke with all of you about, so you're pretty familiar with that. We had fifth through eighth-grade science curriculum writing institute, which Bethany helped to lead that work, and it was incredible work and really exciting work. So we'll be sharing that out. I believe it, we're planning on sharing that in November with all of you, the work that was done at that time. And it still is a work in progress, that curriculum document. We did spend three full days, gave teachers a break, and then came back together in August for one more day. So we did do four days, but some pretty significant shifts in science in looking at the standards, what we currently have, and some changes that we did need to make in building those new units. So a lot of work happened this summer, and we'll be bringing that to you. We also met with our tripod field-testing teachers. And tripod is our student survey tool that we were field-testing last year. And at the end of the year, we brought the teachers together during the summer to really recap the year, see how that went, what the recommendations would be for moving forward, how we should be implementing the tool. And they really recommended, because we do have a lot going on right now, and we wanted to build a strong base of teachers using the tool, to add one more, you know, cohort of teachers using the tool before moving forward and using it with all staff. And they actually said that how they wanted to roll it out, each of them wanted to recruit one other teacher, and they become their tripod buddy to help and support them through the process. So really neat that that was their recommendation for rolling out and continuing that work. So that's ongoing. We also had the opportunity, that same day, the CEO of tripod came up to work with us. Tripod actually doesn't have a protocol for teachers to share their results with students, and not actually, you know, all of the results, but more of a summary or anything important to either get more information from students or to be more transparent about their teaching. So we actually worked on creating a possible protocol So we actually worked on creating a possible protocol that tripod would share out with all districts they work with. And then our P summer institute, this was for our tier-one district, which is South Keegan, and I thought it was important to share with all of you as well, because it's work that, moving forward, you know, Amherst would be involved in when Amherst becomes a tier-one district. But teachers meet during the summer, and the one performance assessment that's used across all districts, there's actually additional scoring that happens. So that assessment is scored within the school, but during the summer, we do, another school takes those assessments and scores them to see what that, the inner reader reliability is. So kind of exciting work that happens there, and more task development work happens at the summer institute for case. We also met with teachers for a full day, which I shared with all of you at our last meeting, about our mentor program development. And then we had our grades one through eight math institute, where we developed our math curriculum, which is a huge step forward, because teachers have relied on Math &amp; Focus more for their scope and sequence, and while Jen has supported them in making some changes, where, you know, maybe not including an entire chapter because part of it isn't aligned to Common Core, our teachers have still relied mainly on that resource. But creating the curriculum and having them involved in that work really taught them that, where that alignment is to standards. So we'll be talking more about math, but exciting work happened there. And then our full-day kindergarten program development, which Jerry spoke a little bit about, we did some work on the report card, we finalized our literacy work, our math work, we talked a little bit about science and social studies, and Jen Eccleston was actually instrumental in the math piece. We didn't really, again, since kindergarten teachers were meeting for really the full-day program development, they didn't join us for the math or the literacy work, and Jen was the one who did much of the creation of their math curriculum for them and then worked with them on the in-service day. So while they didn't get a chance to, you know, roll up their sleeves, they were actually walked through the process Jen took, and she did an incredible job. And Jen was a former kindergarten teacher and math expert, so unbelievable that she did that work for them. So we actually have K-8 math curriculum because of Jen's help and support. And then assessment grading and reporting book club, we spoke about already, but those book club meetings, you know, everyone said how great the meetings were and just the rich discussions that occurred and how their learning was, was pushed in those meetings, yeah.
So, and I know we've talked a little bit about the work that Jen has done when we were looking at our test scores, so I'm really excited to hear that she's been able to dive in even more and have things be aligned in terms of curriculum.
Yeah. It was amazing. We actually got feedback from some teachers where they were actually upset.
Because they lost some things to teach?
No, no. The opposite, they were upset that they had been teaching some concepts that they didn't need to.
Right, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
And thrilled now, they feel like, you know, things keep being added to the teacher's plate and we never take anything away. And this was actually an opportunity to really look more, you know, tightly at our alignment between Math &amp; Focus and the standards, and it really allowed the teachers to understand what they should be teaching and how they, you know, and when, and, yeah, and how much time. For example, third grade, they were spending a lot of time in the beginning of the year on concepts that didn't need to be taught, chapters one through three. We were able to pare that down significantly.
So that probably helped with the pacing quite a bit, too.
Yes. And the, one of the teachers who was presenting the work, shared with the third-grade teacher, she said, "You know, every year we talk about how we don't have enough time for multiplication."
Yep.
Here's our time.
Yeah, you have the time.
For multiplication.
Great.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll present that.
Okay.
I think we'll do that in October, we were planning.
Okay, right, yep.
I'm doing that then, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How smart are we making our little kids? This is awesome.
That's the goal.
Exactly.
Well, I think the math program, too, is the last year or two, it's beginning to work even more and more. We, Christine and I were sharing, she shared a story with me about some high school teachers talking about really what's happening there. They're saying that, you know, even AP courses or those kinds of things, not having to, they're expecting that they have to teach X, Y, and Z, and then they find the kids have already had X, Y, and they're only have to start with Z. So it's, it's beginning that those are the kinds of things.
It's going to have a ripple effect, and the kids are going to come to the high school in a much more advanced place than they have been in the past.
And with a new textbook at the high school, it's, it's really going well, and we'll see some benefits from that as it goes along.
Thank you. And we're a little jump, we're jumping around a little bit in informational, but John has some information on some summer facilities work.
Oh, you do?
Yes, he does.
Oh, that's what summer was?
Well, it was, it was both.
Yeah, just off the top of your head, things that you want to highlight for the board?
Could you come on up?
That John's been working very hard this summer.
We just don't get to have you on that. We're trying to make most of it.
Make sure you hear all that you've done as well.
The information's all.
It's been a pretty quiet summer overall, but to start out where we did the least amount of work was AMS. You're welcome, Porter. And the, we had a, we're having a problem there with the storm drains are failing and the parking lot is sinking, and what we found was, there's a joint where the, where the culvert attaches underground, or the pipe is failing, and so it's washing out the dirt underground, and the parking lot sank, and we had Lake Amherst, we were calling it, in the parking lot, or I wasn't. So that was, that was one, one minor issue we, we took care of, so hopefully that entrance by the annex, there will no longer be a puddle there, and in the future, we'll continue to try to budget, keep replacing a section every year at an affordable cost. And so that was one project. Over at Clark School, we added three handicap ramps out back to the classrooms. The one on the end, we couldn't do because the door opens the wrong way, and the ramp had gone way out in the parking lot. But we had failing concrete structures there and no, no handicap access to the, to the playground or the back of the building. So now there's, there's three of those back exits that have accessible, accessibility. The bathrooms, the bathrooms at, at the Clark School, the student bathrooms, we replaced the partitions in those, the other ones were just old and rusted and like they get, so those are all brand-new. I won't forget anything, Clark, oh, at Clark. The staff bathroom, it used to be a two-seater, we converted it to a one-seater.
The one downstairs.
Yeah, the one downstairs across from the office. And we redid the flooring, and there's, there's still plans to paint it, I just ran out of time this summer, and to get that accomplished. And then the bathrooms upstairs, if anybody has ever seen the old bathrooms that were up there in the, in the very old part of the school, they were interesting. And so we redid just one of them, and, and the reason is, we want to make sure we, whether we need the other two bathrooms or not, so we're waiting for some staff feedback, and Jerry and I are going to work together on this to, to finish one or two of the other ones, either back as bathroom, storage closets, an office for his favorite secretary, or something. Once, once, once Christmas break is here, I'm hoping to finish that project. I think that's all we did at Clark. Over at Wilkins?
We did the drain out front. They have a stereo coming for that.
Oh, that's right. And the drain, two days before school, I get an email that the parking lot's sinking. So that was on Wednesday, so Friday morning, we had the storm drain in front of the school had to be dug up, cut out, rebuilt and repaved, got it done just in the nick of time, and as the buses are rolling in. And then over at Wilkins School, the portables, we looked at replacing the skirting, and skirting is really expensive, as I've learned. I've never lived in a mobile home, so I've never had to buy any. So we looked at more affordable options, because it gets killed by the weed whackers. So if you drive by there now, you'll notice, I got a, I had a contractor get very creative, he took vinyl siding and he just ran it vertical, and it can be replaced in chunks as we wear through it with the weed whackers. So it's, it's now maintainable and affordable. It was going to be twenty-something thousand dollars to put new skirting around both of the portables, so we did it substantially less money than that. The, the bathrooms, or as we call them, Jerry's executive washroom at the Wilkins School. I don't know if, the, we had some struggles with the baths, because the boys' room had a really attractive green tile on the walls, all of the fixtures were, were original, the, to nineteen seventy-two, I believe it is.
Yes, this is the one with the sink was coming out, and students were handing you pieces of the sink.
Yeah. It had the Bradley sink that you step on, it was very attractive, rusted, non-locking, partitions. So that was my biggest struggle of the whole summer, also my, my biggest accomplishment, I think, because I, I was able to do it at close to the budget number, thank God for the skirting. And the, we were able to retile the ba, if anybody has seen them, the ba, the boys' room has been completely retile to cover up the green. The girls' room weren't as spoiled, because their tiles weren't quite as unattractive as the boys' room. They did both get new tiles on the floor, all new fixtures, new partitions, hands-free faucets, and, and nice sinks, and we do have one bug we're working out, so if you see soap on the mirrors when you go, that's going to go away. But other than that, do we do anything else that's?
Well, you're going to have the washer and dryer in the back.
Oh, that's right. So working with the building inspector, we found with the, with the capacity of the school, the amount of bathrooms, we were able to eliminate two toilets from the boys' room, which leaves us two, and four urinals, which leaves us three, and we built the custodial closet in the back. And that sounds a little selfish, but what it allows us to do is put a washer and dryer in there. Right now, all the mops and rags get put in a laundry bag and driven over to the middle school to be washed. So we're putting that, just putting a washer and dryer back there, which hasn't been done yet, we're breathing for a couple days after school starts. And then we're also putting in a slop sink that is at floor level. Problem there, we have these floor machines and carpet machines that drain out the bottom. All the sinks we have are too high, so they have to drain it into a five-gallon bucket and then, and then pick it up and pour it down the sink. So it's going to resolve that problem. I think that's all we did, right? Amherst, Jerry?
The tile is beautiful, by the way, we'll have to say.
Yes.
And the kids do seem to like the hands-free soap in that, although we've had kids come up and say, "Look what I did with the soap." You know, they've got a nice little creation there that they've made, and the kids have figured out how to get the paper towels to come flying out, so you get a few of them out at once and they can. So, but they, they will bring me in to show me what we can do with this, and I go, "We'd like you to use one paper towel," and...
Well...
So they're quick to figure out the technologies and what makes them tech.
Well, with the technology, we're also going to be in some of the bathrooms. Now, we're, we're going to do an experiment, we're going to start, we're going to go with the, the hands-free paper towel dispensers, so that the, or the battery-operated, so they get one sheet and then have to wait if they want another one. So it's harder to plug up toilets with them and throw them all over the floor, so.
It seems to me we're forgetting something.
Yeah, not us.
Oh, maybe there's a lot of things we've talked about that we haven't got.
Yes, we don't want to talk about unfinished projects, you know? We'll, we'll do that at the end of the year.
I, I will say, my second-grade girl came home on the first day of school, raving about how awesome these boys' bathrooms apparently look, because she heard about them from her friends.
I had a...
So it apparently made a huge impact on these kids.
I had a student in Mont Vernon come up and thank me for the bathrooms in Amherst. I hadn't figured out, but it happens.
What bus is the one to use the bathroom?
So we're going to need another bus if you could work that in the budget for bathroom groups.
Just so they can try, test it out.
Anything about the middle school that you want to share?
The middle school, oh, are you trying to prod me?
I, I, yeah, I have a question on the gym floor. Do you have any, any updates?
Oh, you need much more. Yeah.
Polly ball.
Well, here's the update, we've been struggling with these poly balls, or poly beads, whatever you'd like to call them, and they keep telling us when the humidity drops, so won't the poly beads. And I think they're right, because this week has been a very good week for, for poly beads. I think he had two one day, five another day, and I never got a report today, so I'm assuming...
Five.
It was five today. So we're down to just a few a day.
How big are they?
Once today, we're like a eye drop.
Oh, so small.
Because he's getting to them right off, and...
So as the weather improves?
They're not really...
Slice size. Take some off and bunch it, a mineral spirit down to it that keeps it from spreading, so the floor looks beautiful, it really does. Last week, we were a little scared at the beginning, because when that humidity came back up, one day it was two hundred and forty, and then, but then all of a sudden, boom, it just started, I think, we're hoping it squeezes itself to that point.
Maybe that was the last push.
So we're hoping it opens up, finishes drying, and we can have this behind us.
So once the humidity comes back, because it will come back, do we expect to have to deal with this again?
I don't believe so, and because once the floor expands, air will be able to get in there so that the, the, the floor finish can dry finally. So what happens, they put it on, air fell in there, squished together, no air gets in there, it squishes a little tighter, and then, and so I've called the poor guy from the floor company and the, and the rep from the finish company, and they, they both swear this happens, and it doesn't happen often, but when it does, it can be this extreme. I guess, looking back to the beginning, I wish we knew that this could have happened, which they never told us at first, because it would have been easier to maintain it rather than wait till we had to refinish it and start from scratch again and put even more poly in there. So the refinishing it two months into the process is really probably what hurt us the most, but we, it was too late to do anything else, because we had smeared all those poly beads into the floor without knowing it, so it was a mess.
Yeah, I was over there today, Roger seemed much more positive. I, by the time I see him, I will say to him, "How many today, Roger?" And he said, "Five," so I knew it was five, so. But it looks beautiful, and I think once we get past this, we should be okay.
When the humidity, it appears when the humidity really lowers, and we get, as you mentioned, dry out, also the fact that it's now being used, and the kids are on it all the time, and it's helping to, you know, that floor is giving as it goes, so I think that's another reason why we've been using an Alpha PE, we've been using it for our poly ball, we're practicing on the dance. I think that's really been instrumental in the fuel coming up. I don't think we'll have it in the winter, by the spring, it'll be fine.
Cool.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thanks, John.
And then the, the last informational special education program development, that was what Porter addressed in the beginning of the meeting, so that was out of order as well, sorry about that. And we don't have any action items this evening, so we need a motion to adjourn?
We have a non-public.
Oh, right, sorry.
So we're going to go into non-public under two items, apparent issue and a, and a student issue, both small letter B under the citation.
Okay.
So we need a...
I'll motion to go into non-public.
Second?
Kuzma, yes.
Gerberly, yes. ACS.
Prescott, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Need to borrow some paper.
Oh, here.
Uh, even with us?
There you go.
Appreciate it.